Okay, Jake, can we call the real please?
Say it again.
Butler?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Lipscomb?
Here.
Obrich?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Frash?
Here.
Vincentza?
Here.
On my number three.
Okay, first item on the agenda this evening, minutes for the September 5th meeting. Has everyone received their copy of the minutes and does anyone have any questions? I'm hearing nothing. I assume everyone's got them and there are no questions. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes for the September 5th Okay, we take a roll call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Upstate.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Frash?
Yes.
Vincentza?
Yes.
Six in favor of the motion.
Okay, the minutes from September 5th have been approved. Okay, move down to correspondence. We received two correspondence requests for permission from the council. The first one was this past Sunday. Yesterday, there was a car show, food was scheduled for Main Street from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. They were walking off the street, all kinds of information. I said this to everybody. Well, it was postponed because of the weather and they contacted me with a due date of October 1st and they would like council's approval to held the car show and cruise in on the first, which is Sunday, from 3:00 to 6:00. Matt, I think you got a copy of that too. I sent that to you.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any, anybody have any comments or questions on that, Beth?
It doesn't, does it conflict with anything that we approved last?
Nothing we have scheduled yet that I'm aware of.
Or on, okay, because we approved a couple of different things and then we got a letter from somebody. We're going to reach out to that person, that's what I'm trying to, so it doesn't conflict with anything.
Not the word.
None of these is.
You know what? Let me talk to St. Mary's. I know they participate in a rosary rally in October. I'm not sure what date that is. If it is a Saturday morning.
But this is on a Sunday, St.
Okay. Well, like I said, I'm not sure, but I think it's typically a Saturday on the courthouse.
Yeah, I don't have any issues at all with either of these. I just want to make sure that we're not double booking things.
Okay, well, we need to make the decision this evening because this is the last council meeting prior to the question.
I'm fine with those. I'm just asking if it doesn't conflict with what we approved last.
We haven't, we haven't been contacted by anybody else for anything from that date, so I, you know.
So the Halloween thing is later?
Yeah.
The Christmas parade, everything?
Yeah.
Everything else that we approved last time, just different dates and no conflict with this.
Okay.
Okay, I think we only need a motion to approve that. Terrence?
No, I'm not seeing.
Please like the car cruise in for the first. Give a second.
Second.
We take a roll call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Frash?
Yes.
Vincentza?
Yes.
On my number three.
Okay, the like the car cruise in for the first has been approved. The other correspondence was from Track County, Huxley. They sent a letter to the mayor, which has also been forwarded. This was not going to take place until October 18th, so if council would like to check, Matt will have them see if there's any problems that you have with anything, or if council wants to look over this and decide tonight again. If not, it could be decided at the next meeting, but.
Matt, you're good?
Yeah.
I don't have a problem making a motion for this tonight for their planning purposes.
Yep.
Okay, a motion from Beth Obrich to approve that.
Second.
Second.
We do this every year, right?
Right. And I'll have to make sure, okay, take a roll call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Frash?
Yes.
Vincentza?
Yes.
Okay, that's been approved for the 18th. Mayor, since they sent you a letter, maybe you go get back to them and just have a touch base with the chief so that they make sure that they're aware of everything that's going to be gated if there's any problem.
Is that something, Jim? I didn't bring that right away.
Yeah, just to see if they can patch base with the chief and make sure that he's aware of everything they're going to do and they don't get any surprises.
Thank you.
Okay, first item on the agenda, the reports of the merger report.
Okay, give me one second here. My report will be very short because I took some time off unless anybody wants to hear the excruciating tale of my bus trip to Annapolis. But anyway, I guess I'm guessing no. I did speak with Greg Clark, who's our welfare and wellness checking officer. Christie brought to my attention a member of the community that she thought was struggling and I wanted to follow through here. I called Doug Buss. They were going to check on her. And we've got somebody else down in the Goodman Apartments and Greg was going to look in on it. So I'm very appreciative of that program, especially for older citizens. I visited the fair again. I got to go to the poultry barn and one of our employees down in the street department asked if I would come in and see the chicken and turkey that his daughter was raising and maybe stick around for the auction until they started bidding at $1,000 and I left. So I also participated in several meetings regarding easements in a water project with Jeremy. We've got kind of a hiccup with one of them and kind of working on that, but everything else looks pretty good. I was very happy to go to the groundbreaking for the dog park. That was last Monday and it looks like it's going to be a great project behind the health department. Sammy went with me. He was very happy to see that happen. And we did the groundbreaking for junior sports. I was up there on Monday. And thanks again to Belmont Savings Bank for, and the Pirates for their contributions to get that vision started. So that's about it.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Does anyone have any questions or comments for the mayor? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to service director, Jeremy Greenwood.
Good evening, council. Council items before us tonight, legislation 31, 2023, the ask-me contract. I know Councilwoman Beth had some questions on that, so we'll deal with that when those come up. I had 14 different meetings throughout some, in the last couple of weeks, completed projects. We're still working on water nodes. We've already ordered our order for next year already. EPA funding meeting last week for lead service lines and some other things. Working on easements for the Route 40 waterline project. That was the one we've got, the mayor just mentioned. We had a hiccup with one of the property owners. Engineer's going to meet tomorrow with the contractor to see if we can work around it. Still have not heard back from the federal EPA on the corrections that were submitted to them about the inspection report, water distribution project. We've started paving, patching, still working on the north side of Route 40 East. Another crew is starting down Walnut and Barton Road. All of the service lines have been hooked up on Spring Park and we're still working with the contractor to get some better notifications. Upcoming projects, truck number 48, the sewer truck that we just got, 2023 GM, is in the shop again. We think it's an electrical issue, so we're dealing with that, going through it. Rec center gym HVAC unit was ordered. We've got a December estimated delivery on that. The wastewater plant, the HVAC unit was ordered. Different company thinking that we're going to get that in the next less than a half month or so. Efall sewer lift station, still working on getting the second pump installed. Walnut, we've got additional water lines that we're working on. Bearings for the screw pumps at the water plant have been ordered. Paving, we're doing some patching in some different areas here. I think what we're going to do is this far in the year, and then try and make a bigger project in spring. The sinkhole project in Central Park, we did close on the two properties and we've got them boarded up now. Working with the fire department and the SWAT team and the police to see if they needed to do any training before we get them demoed. They're scheduled for demo in October. The total project for that was about $630,000 and we submitted for partial grant, partial loan. There's about $226,000, $230,000 in the grant, working on that. I've got the sales agreement here, the, for the bypass road on North Market Street. We've still got, that one's fixed. Still got a sinkhole on Thompson, Johnette, Jefferson. Working on some additional culverts in Spring Park. Water nodes, we talked about that. Still have not heard back on the county on the water agreement contract yet. Once we have that, I'll bring it to council for review and approval. Ask-me contract negotiations. The union has passed their, the proposal. Have that for legislation tonight. Did put copies of that in everyone's box for them to review. Department wise, electric department doing some pole replacement service work, some workout for the get-go proposal. Disconnect streetlights, meter reading, substation maintenance, tree trimming, all the same stuff as before. Water, wastewater, we did the water nodes. Talked about that already, ordering them. We're still camera in lines whenever we can, locating manholes where we have to. The I-70 waterline project is completely completed. I have to go do a walkthrough to make sure. I think we had one issue with a residence driveway that we're working with, but it's a combination of projects. AEP was in there too, so we're working on getting that resolved. Distribution, we talked about that. Also fixing hydrants and curb boxes and valves, you know, when we can fit them in. Thirty-four waterline breaks so far this year. Nineteen of them are attributed to the project. Smoke testing letters. We had a couple of meetings on that, trying to figure out the best way to get those sent out and go through it. Lift station repairs, we talked about that. Street department, passing pole holes and painting. Street repairs, we've got a couple culverts and sinkholes. They're still mowing. Hate to say this, but you know, leaves are going to start soon, so we do not have the prisoners this year. There was some snafu with the guy that usually does it, got promoted and they haven't put anybody in that position yet, so we're kind of going to be hurting with leaves, so it would be awesome if everyone could bag them, but we also understand sometimes there's too many of them to bag, so just, I'm going to ask everybody to start to be patient on those. Rec center, we talked about the HVAC unit. Police, from the last meeting when we had it, we did get information on the two cars that were in the accident. Car number five is going to be rebuilt, redone, and car number four was scrapped. So we went online and found another used car and have it ordered and it's coming in. Estimated to be in service, what'd you say, chief, in November? So that's still pretty far away, but, but at least we know what, what we're dealing with and going through it. It is the same type of car that we had before, so we're going to do what we did and salvage all the pieces and parts and everything off of the old car before it's scrapped. Includes what? The cages and lights and everything we can, so it'll be another good deal. I think, what was it, $18,000?
Seventeen, seven.
Seventeen, seven. And then the.
$100 off from the value insurance gave us.
Yeah, the insurance company gave us $100 less for the scrapped car, so worked out pretty well. And that's everything.
Thank you, Jeremy. Anyone have any comments or questions, Beth?
So the cars, we're getting insurance for those, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Is the water fountain at the?
No, parks are still in. We still haven't gotten down there to get the guys down to it. By the time we do it, we'll have to shut it off, but it's still, well, the parks are in. I just haven't gotten them down there yet.
Okay, and you just, you'll indulge me as I ask that question.
I understand. I've been saying it since June, been trying to get them down there.
If we could get it done before that Halloween event, that would be key, chief.
And Dorothy Tank, what's going on?
Uh, I don't know. What can I say?
Not, it's ongoing.
It's ongoing, yeah.
Ongoing.
We've made the decision to not talk about this because the information needs to remain confidential.
Yes.
At this point. And have not. So, okay. Some of my questions.
Yeah, they're done?
Yeah, Jeremy, where do we stand right now with the AEP battery, 10 megawatt?
Um, we.
Is there going to be a contract or we have to?
No, we've got a letter of intent they sent to us. We marked it up, went back and forth. Been working with Donnie and the law director. Just got to get back with them again to get it, to get it moving again. So that was, when was that? Thursday?
Thursday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, because Thursday I went to Logan for the EPA.
Are we going to kind of discuss that further because, you know, we said we want to go in a little bit of further discussion, see if there are any negatives or?
I mean, the, the letter of intent would just basically be for them to do the engineering to go through it and then we'll know a lot more at the end of that. So once that's determined, then we'll have that ability. But some of the things that they were asking about was confidentiality, one of those things with it too, but you know, we had to kind of point out to them that, you know, this is an open council meeting, that, you know, the public's here, the media's here, you know, we just got to kind of watch. But they said, you know, as long as we're not going out and saying, hey, you know, we're doing this, this and this.
So as far as after the letter of intent, I mean, will be able to maybe inform the council?
Well, I'm thinking with the letter of intent, it's going to take them four, five, six months to get the engineering done, just to see if it's feasible going through it. I mean, logically on paper right now, it looks feasible, but to get the hard numbers and if there's any distractions or anything else, it would be literally after that, that's done.
Everything looks positive on it.
It does, but, but it's one of those things. Until, until they run all the engineering, you know, on paper, it looks great, but we'll have to come back and see.
Before there's any complete signature, we won't be able to get the information?
Yes, before we enter into contract for it, yes.
The letter of intent, my understanding, what, does not obligate us.
No, it does not.
It just shares all the information, what they found.
Well, it, it allows them to do the engineering, the basic, the pre-design, so the due diligence to make sure that it, what their assumptions are going to work. So once we have that, then put, I, I figure probably going to take them at least six months, if not longer, to get it done.
Any other questions?
Any update about the signs we talked about instead of guardrails?
No.
You talked that guy.
I talked to that guy. He actually looked at it and said that guardrails might be a possibility, but he hasn't gotten back to me yet. He was going to investigate it more and get back to me.
Yeah, that was five o'clock for it.
And I have someone down on Franklin asking for children at play signs. They're asking about the intersection of North Market, Franklin, Glendale, two signs on either side of the intersection on North Market. People speeding up and down North Market.
Okay.
You know what I was?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so if it's, if that's possibility, get a couple of signs down there. It's weird if that wasn't possible, that maybe we could talk to them about extra patrol, nothing else down there, but.
I think we should do that anyways. I know that's one of the areas where we.
There's a area that goes down there that really liked to play in, like an empty.
Right there's a farm. There used to be a house that burned down there.
Yep, yep. So I know I see him a lot because I drive by it a lot, but she was asking about that.
I know we get the radar sign down in that area too.
I was going to say, can you get a radar sign down there, chief?
The radar sign was already down there for a while. Well, I think it was further down, wasn't it, Matt?
Yeah, give me her address.
I'll get it for you. I don't quite know, but I know her area, so.
I think the signs, the stationary signs are good too.
Yes, no.
Multiple-prong approach here. Somebody speeding around.
I agree.
Okay, I'll get with you, Matt, about that. I'll find out for you.
How, how long would it take you to get signs done if they're going to put them on children at play?
It depends on if we got to order them or not and come through.
We have to order them a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
I would just like to ask if they are going to bag leaves, make sure they put them in paper bags.
Paper bags.
Because we can't do anything with that.
Good point. Thank you. Forgot about the paper bags.
How long has the city been doing that service, picking up leaves?
Well, over 40 years.
Okay.
1942.
Any other questions for the service director, J.C.?
Did you get the drawings for the rec center bathroom? Got them, but there was a dimensional bust, so we're fixing them, so going through it, so it's in progress.
Close?
We're not going to get a minute, yeah.
What's a dimensional bust?
Basically, we've got the existing drawings, what they were supposed to be done, and when we measured it, there ends up being a less than a four-inch wall, which we know is not accurate. So something's wrong with one of the dimensions.
Gotcha.
And how many hydrants do we still have out there?
Uh, the number, well, this is skewed because if you count the ones that aren't in service yet, because the ones, the new ones we just installed.
Yeah, just the broken ones.
I think we're still at 10.
Will some of these that we're replacing with new items?
Well, and some of them are the ones where we haven't been able to get parts for them because they're sold, but that's where, when they come through with the distribution and take out the old hydrants, we're going to use the boneyard. And then we can get seals for them or we can make them. We just can't get some of the weird parts, the internal parts, because they don't make them anymore.
That was the thing that we love, a kind of a graveyard.
Yes, that was one of the things why I wanted to make sure that we got them instead of just scrapping them.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you, Jeremy.
Welcome.
Move on to police chief, Matt Obrich.
Good evening, council. Just keep it short with some highlights because we have the police committed tonight, but update on the two officers that were reported last meeting being injured in that crash. Both are back to work with no restrictions within a couple of days. We assisted with an escort for the Eyes of Freedom Memorial Wall, the Barnesville Pumpkin Festival, as we do every year. I got a call today asking for a cruiser to be at the burial service for the World War II vet in Bridgeport. It was brought home, presumed missing, MIA since 1943. They identified his remains with DNA, so we will be there for that this Saturday. Also met with Mr. John Maloney from the VA out of Bethlehem, West Virginia, to do some more training for our officers in responding with Veterans Affairs. And that's it.
Okay, Matt, did you say that both guys are back to work from the accident?
Yes.
That's good. Anyone have any questions for the chief?
I just want to thank, thank, thank you for the escort.
Yes.
Any other comments for your questions for the chief? Thanks, Matt. Move on to finance director, Ed Weldon.
Good evening, everyone. We did have a finance committee meeting tonight and I'm not going to share on that meeting. That's all.
Okay, we'll move, anybody have any questions for her other than Phil Donkey's history report? Move on to planning and zoning, Mr. Murphy.
Just a couple of reminders for council. The board is only appeals will meet municipal building on Thursday, September 28th, 6:00 p.m. That's in relation to the Carmel Trail Fire District and their variances. It's a great project. It's our first step. Once the board zoning appeals meeting is complete, then their next step is the planning commission meeting. So Christie, I'll be in touch with you hopefully when that can be set up. But that's again Thursday, September 28th at 6:00 p.m. And if anyone's welcome to attend that meeting. And just a reminder again, that door committee will meet Tuesday, October 17th at 6:00 p.m. Here in council chambers. We're encouraging any council members to be there because obviously you're going to be the ones that will make, will make that decision. This will help you get educated on it. If anyone does want to reach out with any questions, they can contact me, Christie or J.C., Beth, and you are best to answer at this point in time. That's it.
Okay, thanks. Does anybody have any questions for her, Don? Okay, thank you very much, Don.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to council committees. Finance, Don Vincentza.
Yeah, we did have a finance committee meeting tonight. For the net share of dust on our revenue, we are at 63.6%. The appropriations were 46.49%. We are waiting on the final report from the state on the audit and we will be able to review that when, when we get that report. We also discussed, you know, where we're at on track with the, with the money that we received on that grant for the water distribution system and we're probably not quite sure, you said maybe close to $2 million, Jeremy? Yeah. We also discussed a lot on trying to determine how much money or how much money we're hoping that we'll be able to have for paving next year. The contract also, we'll be doing some of that tonight. It was past by the union, as Jeremy said. We also had a conversation with the junior sports and, you know, what we can do money-wise to, to help them out. And there'll be further meetings and discussions on that. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Don. Anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to utilities. Captain Butler?
No, report our next meeting is October 2nd, Monday, October 2nd, at 6:15.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for anybody? Okay, we want the police, Mr. Smith.
I have no report. We have a short meeting, police committee meeting after this meeting.
Okay, north side streets. Mike, do you have anything on the north side?
I have no report on the north side.
Okay, thank you. Move on to streets south side. J.C., do you have anything on the south side?
No report, but a couple complaints on Orchard Drive. I don't know when that's going to get patched back in.
No, but I'll have them look at it. We just had them look at a couple of different areas to re-put some stuff in there. Orchard is going to get water line replaced, so it won't be a lot before it gets paved. I mean, we could patch it, but.
Yeah, just bad at the very end.
Let me see. I dragged one on here.
Just one comment I have on the streets. I'd like the, you know, police comment on it. In front of the post office, I don't know what utility that was, if that was telecommunications or fiber optic, but.
That was a few, wasn't it?
Fiber optic and also the gas company. The gas company hit the fiber optic.
Yeah, I mean, I'd just like to comment. I mean, they did a real good job on patching that and kind of respecting our roads and that was a very good job they did. I'd just like to comment on that.
Okay, J.C., do you have anything on safety?
Nope.
Building grounds. Beth, you have anything?
I do. We have a meeting tomorrow here at 6:00 and we will be inviting back the, have invited back the leadership of the junior sports to continue conversations with them.
And that's at 6?
That's what I have. Christie, do you have? That's what I have, 6:00.
That's what I got in my book.
Beautiful.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Beth? Okay, move on to planning, commission. Christie?
The door committee will meet next month. I believe that's October 18th, if I'm not mistaken.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Yeah, two things.
Still encouraging and welcoming comments from the public or other council members. That's all I have to report.
Any questions for Christie on the? Okay, any questions for Christie on the... Okay, move on to fire district, Linda, do you have anything for fire district?
Yes, I do, uh, the board approved the, uh, PUCO grant that was awarded for hazmat training in the amount of twenty-seven hundred fifty dollars, the board also approved the ARPA Ohio Public Safety Retention Grant in the amount of sixty-eight thousand dollars, and, uh, the, the, uh, what is it, the Belmont County Mental Health and Recovery Board has given a grant, uh, of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars to, uh, expand the cares program, and that will pay for the salary and a vehicle and, uh, fringe benefits.
Please help them with your grants. Anybody have any questions for Linda?
Just a comment, so since, since they own the property now, they're, they're able to get grants, obviously, it sounds like you're making a good job, and, yeah.
And also, as Tom, uh, said, the September twenty-eighth meeting, and that is so that they can dot all the i's and cross all the d's.
Jim, if I could make a comment too, on the cares program that they started, it, it was an immediate, huge help, uh, we noticed in law enforcement, we noticed the difference right away, uh, every time we get called to, um, anybody that's a mental or things that we would normally have to struggle to try to cope with, and it would take an officer to ride with them to, you know, squad down to the hospital and, and take us off the road, those folks completely take care of all of that now.
I'm just grateful that they're able to get these grants, with us giving the building, you know, that, I mean, look at it, I mean, that's impressive.
That's very impressive.
That's what, almost two hundred, if not more than that, two hundred thousand dollars worth of payments.
Those grants didn't have to go...
And still going. And the fact that they can renovate this building, I mean...
Those, those are the grants that they'll be eligible for now, those grants that they're getting now, they're already there.
I'm just grateful that they have a building and are able to get those.
Yeah.
Me too.
And I just, I'll just, credit to their leadership.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, any other comments or questions, can we move on to recreation, Christie?
Um, a big thank you to all who attended the Fall Fest, um, it was a huge success, the Crafton Bender Show was very well-received, and the concerts were all very good, um, a big thank you to Eric and Kay, and the rest of the rec center staff for all their hard work, it's a lot of work to put on all of those, um, flag football and youth volleyball has started, um, there's a total of two hundred and twenty-five kids enrolled, um, between those two programs, um, and drainage work is being completed at the baseball and softball field, um, the city did purchase a hundred tons of infield dirt with the eleven thousand dollars grant money from the Pirates Fields for charities, the next record meeting is this Thursday at four-thirty at the Recreation Department.
Okay, thank you, Christie, anybody have any comments for Christie on the rec center?
So, the Fall Fest was good, good success?
Yes.
Excellent, wish I could have been there.
Okay, uh, move on to park district, Linda, do you have anything else?
I have no report.
They're officially closed now, aren't they, the pool, everything's closed?
The pool's closed, but not the park.
Or it's not closed yet.
I had someone reach out to me and ask, have we ever, or the park district ever looked at doing like a paws, pools for paws, or like having the last day for the puppies to come in?
Oh, I really don't know, you'd have to ask Katie.
Okay, well, I just thought maybe you'd know, but...
No.
There's other pools that do that, don't they?
Oh, well, we does, and I think maybe up in New Philly, I don't know, but people really like it.
Don's Shad Pool is the last one.
On the last day?
Yeah, Glendale.
Glendale, yeah, so, could you take that tonight, please, to ask the next consideration?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions for Linda? Okay, we'll move on to ordinances, resolutions, law director, Liz.
Before we get to, uh, the resolution, I believe there's a council person that wants to go to executive session.
Yeah, we were provided a copy of the contract, and I have some questions for the, uh, the resolution, and, uh, needs to be, in an executive session, it was confidential, so I asked that we have an executive session under O R C one twenty-one point twenty-two G four regarding contracts and negotiations.
Okay, we have a question or motion, give a second.
Who's our section? Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Opbridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Drash?
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll turn to executive session.
She touched it.
She's definitely, oh my gosh, she has to be dead.
It's a fantastic, it's a broken...
It's like a freezer.
It's your favorite object, it's a broken thermostat.
But it's not. It doesn't feel good at all at all. Everybody else is freezing.
I'm starting to guess what you're doing, it's a malfunction.
Turn on the air conditioner and sit it on your tube.
When I turn it off, I'm wearing pants.
Yes, they are.
I turn, I turn it off.
She's crazy over there.
Sorry, sorry, yeah.
I went to the bathroom when you guys were, um, doing your thing, I was like, I'm staying here the whole time.
Okay, I'll accept the motion to go back into regular session.
So, on the convention?
And we need to vote you're back?
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Opbridge?
Yep.
Smith?
Yes.
Drash?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, we're back in, uh, regular session, at this time, no action has been taken in the executive session, uh, we are, however, at this time, completing a special meeting to take place next Monday, here in the city building at six P.M., and that is on...
Twenty-fifth.
What is it?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, and we will have a special meeting here in the city building, uh, to consider this contract, uh, at that time, uh, the majority of that will probably be an executive session, but if there is any action taken after that, it will be an open session of meetings, so, the meeting will be open to the public, except for when we go to executive session. Six o'clock. Okay, if that, if you have nothing else?
Absolutely, we should do, we have the first reading of...
Right, okay, that's right.
...the legislation tonight, before council, this piece of legislation is Resolution number twenty, twenty-three dash thirty-one, and it's the resolution approving tentative agreement between the City of St. Clairsville and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local Thirty-three Ninety-three, Ohio Council Eight, AFL-CIO, and declaring emergency.
Okay, Jane, would you read the, uh, ordinance, resolution, I'm sorry, for the first reading?
Resolution number twenty, twenty-three, thirty-one, resolution approving tentative agreement between City of St. Clairsville and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local Thirty-three Ninety-three, Ohio Council Eight, AFL-CIO, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, first reading has been taken, uh, no action at this time, so if no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have one other matter, just quickly, I'm gonna pass out a, uh, resolution for council's consideration, about six years ago, seven years ago, we, the council voted on a motion, there's two, one for each of you. One for each of you. Copy for each of you, um, council to consider, when people come to council to speak, right, I have copies for everybody there, so, I'm just, I feel like we're limiting access to the public, and that's bothering me, so I'm gonna ask council to consider amending that resolution, so this is just draft, 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 draft language, but I feel like it should be open to the public, I understand that they need to have a certain order to them, I don't have any problem with anybody being put on the agenda so that we know who's coming, but I feel like if there's a particular issue and several people wanna speak, I feel like they should get this, get spit, I know there's a time limit kinda thing, and I can appreciate that it still should be something under the purview of council, but I just feel like it's too limiting what we have, so, I'm asking council to just take a look at it and think about it, and then we can start discussing it the next council meeting, I certainly don't want any emergency language, certainly something that, I wanna get everybody's input, but this is the kinda place to start, thank you.
Okay, at this time, we entertain a motion to adjourn. Second?
Oh, wait, I see.
To adjourn.